Somebody's in.
Evening, everyone. We're going to give a couple more minutes here until starting the meeting because people are still arriving, but I wanted to do a sound check for those who are online with us. Tanya, I see you're online. Can you hear us all right?
Sure do.
Tanya, can you hear, can you hear us?
Yeah, I hear you. Do you hear me?
We can't hear you.
Oh.
Hold on a second. We're working on it.
I hear you good, but.
Tanya, if you could try speaking again.
Do you hear me? No? Dummer.
Okay, we're still not hearing you. Barbara Hart, can you try speaking just to make sure it's not Tanya's microphone or something?
I can hear Tanya and I imagine you can hear me.
Okay, we're not getting anything from the online.
Huh. Barb, I heard you too.
A couple more minutes here while Peter debugs. No pressure, right? Tanya, one more time? You can do a sound check?
Hello?
Hey.
Do you hear me? Oh, yay, good. Glad it's working.
All right. Okay, I believe, Miranda, do we have everyone here we expect? Boardwise? Jonathan, okay. Well, let's give Jonathan another minute here because we still have a number of people coming. We got quite the full house tonight, which is great to see. All right, I think we've got a full board, extra full board of trustees because we have people we're swearing in here tonight. For, actually, this is probably mostly for our new trustees who haven't worked with our new hybrid system yet. Just as a reminder, everyone, we have a mute button on the, on the microphones in front of us, so you push to talk and if there's a green light, it'll show up. There you go, that is active. And if you're not actively speaking, just, you know, try to remember to turn it off so we can keep the chatter down and make sure that everyone at home can hear us very well.
We're good.
All right, and we'll also probably doing like a roll call, so it might be a mic check moment, though, for a couple of you. Won't quite be roll call yet. But given that, let us call the order. This meeting of the Netherlands Board of Trustees on Tuesday, April 19th, 2022 at 7:03 PM. Macy, would you please call the roll?
Of course. Mayor Larson?
Here.
Trustee Taylor?
Here.
Trustee Apt? Trustee Koomz Esma? Oh, I'm so sorry.
He's absent.
I'm sorry about that, guys. Mayor Protem Baumhofer?
Here.
Trustee Danforth?
Here.
And Trustee Corvelin?
Here.
All right. All right, so this evening, obviously, we're going to do a few things, some housekeeping things, and then we'll get to the reason everyone's here and handovers and the important stuff. So first, we do have a consent agenda. We have five items on that. If any trustee has questions, comments, or a motion regarding the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve.
My second.
Macy, if you'd call the vote?
Mayor Protem Baumhofer?
Yes.
Trustee Apt?
Yes.
Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Trustee Danforth?
Yes.
Trustee Corvelin?
Yes.
And Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Very good. We are going to move into public comments next, but before I do that, get to do, I'm going to do things a little different. I want to make, I want to say something here because tonight is obviously, it's a night of new beginnings for Netherland. We are going to be swearing in a new mayor, a new board of trustees, and a few other changes this evening. But I want to take this moment before we go too far along to recognize that with these new beginnings comes an ending as well, one of which is so more deserving of recognition and celebration by us all. And of course, I'm speaking of the fact that tonight is the final Board of Trustees meeting for our town marshal, Chief Larry Johns. Chief Johns, you have served Netherland amazingly for 20 years now and through some of our town's hardest days and some of our best days. It's, your departure is going to leave a massive hole in this community, one which I'm fortunate, I'm happy to say Jen gets to be the successor to Phil, and I'm very excited about that. But I am eternally thankful for all the years you've given us, the service you've given us, the way you have been a part of our community and not just a, an employee or law enforcement. You are a cornerstone of Netherland and have been for so many decades. So I, I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank you from the bottom of my heart, wish you the very best in your next adventures, and just really just to say thank you, Marshal. Thank you so much.
People of Netherland, I can't, you know, say enough. This is a great little town and fortunate to all live, live and be here and work here when we can. It's a super safe town. I'm just, just fortunate to spend my time in law enforcement here, willing to support the people and hopefully this will continue on and this little town can grow and can support our law enforcement partners with Boulder Sheriff, Colorado Rangers that are here, and Jen, of course. So thank you all, and Netherland Fire, too. So thank you all.
And while we're doing thank yous, can I say a thank you as well?
Sure.
This is actually a thank you on behalf of Congressman Jonah Goose. So I'm going to read it on his behalf. It says, "Thank you, Mayor Larson, for your dedicated service as the mayor of Netherland. It has been a true honor to work alongside you over the years. I join your constituents in Netherland in thanking you for the many years of steadfast service and commitment to this wonderful community. Throughout your time in public service, you have consistently put your community first, whether it was ensuring Netherland had the resources to survive during the global pandemic, to your assistance on key projects, including our partnership on wildfire resiliency and mitigation, and Big Springs egress, which will be incredibly important for the years to come. I wish you all the best, my friend, in your next adventures. From Jonah Goose."
To thank him next time I see him. Thank you, Lindsay, for that. This is the opening of public comment, so we will open the floor to anyone who would like to provide public comment on any non-agenda item this evening, either here in the room with us or, of course, those who are joining us online in our hybrid meeting. I think everyone knows, come to the podium, identify yourself, let us know if you're a resident or not, and you can have three minutes to let us know what you're thinking about. So anyone who would like to come up to the podium now, I'm also scanning online to see if anyone catches our eye. You go right ahead.
Kathleen Chipai, 30-year resident of East Magnolia, 18-year business owner. I wanted to take time to thank Larry also and appreciate everything you've done for the community. It hasn't gone unnoticed. One of the reasons I wanted to give this non-agenda public comment is because I was one of the only, I was the only person from the public at the orientation meeting, and I thought, I wanted to draw attention since that meeting wasn't recorded, that Larry was asked, I believe by Tom, what he thought was most important for the next board, and Larry said it was the emergency exit out of Big Springs. And I think that that needed to be put on record and that we should all think about that, coming from Larry. Something else at the orientation meeting was that, I forget the gal's name that's in charge of sewage, but she confirmed that we are at 70% capacity right now during the winter, which is our low use for the sewage system, and that we would be at 80% capacity come this summer. And the reason it was so high now is because new people had moved into the community. So at, she said that at 80%, the town needed to be focusing on upgrading the sewage system, and at 90%, we legally had to be in the process of upgrading the system. So those were two things from the orientation meeting that I wanted to make sure everyone heard and was shared. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and trustees. I'm Colonel Ronald Abramson. I'm the chief of the Colorado Rangers, and I am not a resident of Netherland, although sometimes I feel like it, and especially our, our frontline troops that we send here so often. I know many of them feel part of the community. I am a proud resident of Boulder County. I will speak very briefly because I've been known to give some long-winded remarks, but I did want to acknowledge my personal appreciation for Marshal Johns. He has been such an inspiration for our government, such a leader for many of the things that we're doing today, from policies and procedures. He's serving, as many of you know, on our Board of Directors currently. He will be a, another big hole to fill, and we hope to fill those shoes. But I've known him, we were just reminiscing, I've known him for at least a decade when we asked him initially as a firearms instructor to come teach at our police academy. And he has served in, in line roles and, and taught folks very quietly on weekends and taken his time off that many of you probably are not aware of, and has been just such an inspiration and leader, not only to Netherland, but also statewide and to an organization like ours. So I wanted to express my personal appreciation. I know the town is in fantastic hands. I have no doubt about that, but those are certainly some pretty big shoes to fill. And Netherland has been very blessed for two decades to have him in service here. Thank you very much.
Can I speak real quick?
Yes, please. Go right ahead.
Barbara Hart, 245 Apollo Drive, Black Hawk. I would also like to share my own recognition of Larry Johns, which we also did at the DDA meeting last week, but Larry wasn't on it. Larry, thank you for your 20 years of service to the Netherland community. Thank you for joining the police department when you did April 29th, 2002, and committing so much time to us. Thank you for serving as interim marshal and accepting the position of town marshal in 2017, and being a confident leader, taking our town through fires, floods, bombings, and more. You will be greatly missed. It has been a pleasure working with you, and I wish you the very best on your next journey.
Thank you, Barb. Anyone else with public comment, either here or online? Not seeing any. We will move on with the agenda and move into our staff reports. Miranda?
Our staff reports are in the packet, but I would like to invite any of the town staff if they have anything they want to add verbally. Larry, did you?
Sorry, learning this new system. It's been two years since we've been here, if anybody doesn't remember. I will do mine, is any additional stuff after Jen swearing in, because I want to speak about our other employees here in town. But my board, or my report is in the packet. Any trustees have any specific questions, please holler and we can discuss that.
Trustees, any questions for any of the staff reports? See Tanya shaking her head, okay. Julian? Oh, I saw you grabbing your mic.
No.
Trustee reports. Well, let's kick it off then. Julian, would you like to lead off with trustee reports?
So my trustee report is in the packet. I have been corrected, of course, because I don't take good notes. The planning commission discussed animal control initially, and I mentioned that currently we have rules about horses and llamas. I've been corrected. We also have rules for chickens, but rules for chickens are in a different part of the code. Nonetheless, what they're looking at, I think primarily are large animal regulations. They've established a subcommittee to determine if any changes are needed, and if so, what those changes might be. They also formed a committee on parking after reviewing our parking study. So that's all I've got on planning commission. Everything else is in the packet.
Thank you, Julian. We started at the bottom list. We'll work our way up the list and set it down. Trustee Danforth?
I don't have much to report, but I just would like to take this time to say that it's been a pleasure to serve as trustee on this board. I think that we've done a lot, and I've learned a lot. And I think it's, it's always a challenge to step into this role, but I'm thankful for this time. So thank you, everybody, for serving with me and supporting me and, and yeah, so thank you.
Thank you, Lindsay. Trustee Corvelin? You have anything to report?
I do not have anything to report.
All right. Trustee Apt?
I recently attended a meeting of the Colorado Communities for Climate Action. CC4CA is an organization, it's a statewide organization. There are 35 communities that are involved in it, and we've been a member for several years. And the primary role is working with the legislature on legislation that will help to address climate change and as well as environmental issues. But my recent activity was joining other towns testifying at a hearing at the state legislature on a new bill that was in committee to monitor toxic emissions. Toxic emissions is something that's been overlooked at the national and state level. The EPA does not have a good handle on 188 toxic chemicals that are released into our air. They don't regulate that many, but I'm really glad to see, at least during that committee hearing, the bill moved ahead, and the state will be setting up five monitoring stations along the Front Range to monitor toxic emissions. And then hopefully, after they get some data, they'll be able to do some regulation. Right now, there's only one monitoring station. It's in Grand Junction, and it doesn't do us any good when the wind's out of the east and blows all that stuff up here to Ned. So I think it's a good bill. The next meeting will be on the 22nd. Anyone from Board of Trustees or the SAB are welcome to attend. It's a Zoom meeting. It'll be about an hour and a half on Friday, and it will basically be an overview of all the bills that are pending and all the bills that were supported by CC4CA. One other item I'll just mention is, while our board a few years ago passed a goal of 100% renewable energy by 2025, that's going to be difficult to meet, but Excel will get us about 87% of the way there. Netherland has done a fantastic job of signing up for renewable energy whenever it's available. A few years back, there was something Excel offered called Renewable Connect. We had the highest percentage of any town in the state sign up for renewable energy. And what we've been looking at is renewable energy that is at the same cost as fossil fuel, and that's going to be, continue to be a goal of the Sustainability Advisory Board. There is a company that's been partnering with us called Sunshare. Sunshare has a whole bunch of solar gardens, and they are going to be offering memberships at no cost and no risk, 10-year contract. You get solar for the same price as fossil fuels. You can go to their website and sign up right now. If you're an Excel customer, please do so. And that way, you don't have to pay for solar panels, and it doesn't cost you anymore on your energy bill. And I, too, would like to say how much I appreciated working with my fellow Board of Members and the great staff we have in Netherland. So thank you.
Thank you, Alan. Mayor Protem Baumhofer?
Very little report. The DDA continues to move forward, trying to work with Tebow, with the Big Springs Parking. It's had a lot of hiccups, and right now, DDA is kind of just waiting on Tebow to get back in contact, confirm what's going on there. So that project is moving, just kind of a little bit of a halt right now as we work through the private kind of government partnership communication. So they're looking at hiring, I believe, the beautification gardener for this year's beautification program, something that is great that the DDA does every year, and continuing to discuss ideas and start to kind of gather a subcommittee for going back at the performance space, kind of trying to tie in with what BroSab's doing, looking to kind of piggyback on the end of the GOC program. So that's about all I have to report, and I wanted to say thank you, Mr. Mayor, for all the time you've spent in Netherland. Has not been an easy job, I don't think, for you, and it's been a pleasure.
Thank you, Jonathan. Well, this is, yeah, this is my last mayor's report, mayor's report, and I have something longer written in the packet, but I'm not going to read that verbatim. I just want to take this moment to, to say a few things and really start with thank yous. I want to really thank the members of this Board of Trustees. We've come together over the last two years under unique circumstances, and I think we've still managed to accomplish a lot of things, not only getting the town through COVID, but actually passing good policies and bringing this town into a stronger place than it was two years ago. I want to thank the Board of Trustees that came before. There are so many trustees I've served with over the last six years who aren't with us this evening, who have moved on, and I really respect all the time and effort they put in. I'm really thankful for the, those who have stepped up and served. Massive thanks to town staff in every department, from, from town hall, public works, community center, parks, streets, our water and sewer, and of course, to our, our law enforcement, our police department. It's been incredible working with you guys for the last six years. I've come to know so many of you so well. I wish, could speak to you, you know, more personally, I will, but I just want to thank you guys. You guys have the toughest job. You guys listen to what we say and the ideas we come up with, and you make them happen out on the streets. So thank you for all the work you guys have done over not just the last six years, but the decades you've been involved in this town. And really, you know, from myself, the person I interact with, I really want to thank our town administrator. We have an incredible town administrator in Miranda Fisher, and I'm in wonderful working with you for the last year or so. But I'd be remiss, too, to, I want to thank in public Karen Garrity, our previous town administrator, and Alicia Reese. I've been so blessed to work under these three incredible women on learning how this town works and keeping it running, and you guys are really the backbone of this town, and thank you so much for the amazing number of hours you put in, way more, because we have accomplished a lot. You know, we've weathered crises, you know, wildfires, COVID-19, bombing attacks, or attempted bombings, fortunately. But we've gotten things done. We've built incredible partnerships, you know, from the Board of Trustees level, the county to state, obviously, within the law enforcement and emergency preparedness group, great partnerships that are going to serve this town well, and managed to pass great policies to this town, from recent things like the rights of nature, that I think is, sets a good basis for future things, to, to big policy things. It took us years of work, like our work on short-term rentals, which every year that passes shows how prescient we were and how fortunate we were to get on top of that before it damaged Netherland, and we now have a responsible STR community within, within Netherland. To the next board, there's so much for you guys to do, obviously. You know, good luck. Thank you so much for serving. I mean, obviously, we, we all know we live in an incredibly special place, and now it's, it's on your shoulders to keep it that way. You know, we were going to face external threats like wildfires and, and the threats, you know, the continued growth of threats from climate change, but we have the internal threats, too. You know, in our business community, our downtown, our lagging downtown development. You guys have a lot of work to do, and thank you for stepping up. Thank you for serving. I'm very happy being able to step away knowing that this is being left in incredibly good hands, and you guys are going to do a wonderful job. And I'm going to leave you with one last piece of advice. I thought about this after that orientation when I was asked advice, and I was kind of put on the spot. And it's illegitimate non-carburunderum, and it's a bit of non-grammatically correct Latin, but has a long political history, and it perfectly encapsulates serving on this board. It's, you're here to do work for the good of the town, and you're going to get a lot of grief for it. You're going to hear things, you know, going to get attacked, particularly online, but you are here because the majority of the town supports you, the silent majority. We support you, and we are thankful that you're going to take on this work, and thank you so much for stepping up to serve. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, guys. Thank you so much. Thank you.
But now we get to get to the fun stuff. Miranda, did you want to introduce this item before we jump right into it?
I would be happy to. So tonight, one of your first action items is going to do the oath for the new board members, and then also the re-elected board members, a trustee Corvelin. We're going to start with Julian Taylor, who will be sworn in as our new mayor.
Step up here in front so everyone can see us.
I'll follow you.
You'll want to use the mic. So everyone can hear you.
Can't think of a better final act as mayor than this. All right, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Julian Taylor, do solemnly affirm.
I, Julian Taylor, do solemnly affirm.
That I will support and uphold the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and uphold the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Colorado.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Colorado.
And the ordinances of the town of Netherland.
And the ordinances of the town of Netherland.
And that I will faithfully and to the best of my skill and ability.
And that I will faithfully and to the best of my skill and ability.
Perform the duties of the office of the mayor.
Perform the duties of the office of the mayor.
Of the town of Netherland.
Of the town of Netherland.
Congratulations, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So Mayor Taylor will now conduct the oath of office for the following trustees. Well, we'll start with Karen Blakemore.
When we did this by video, I recalled us all doing it at once. That was just a fantasy, apparently. So I'm afraid, I'm afraid you're going to hear me droning on and on and on through this whole thing, but there we go. Raise your right hand, Karen. I, Karen Blakemore, do solemnly affirm.
I, Karen Blakemore, do solemnly affirm.
That I will support and uphold the Constitution of the United States.
Of the town of Netherlands.
Of the town of Netherlands.
Congratulations, Tony.
Thank you.
And last, Tom Mahol.
Tom, raise your hand and repeat after me. I Tom Mahol do solemnly affirm.
I Tom Mahol do solemnly affirm.
That I will support and uphold the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and uphold the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Colorado.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Colorado.
And the ordinances of the town of Netherlands.
And the ordinances of the town of Netherlands.
And that I will faithfully and to the best of my skill and ability.
And that I will faithfully and to the best of my skill and ability.
Perform the duties of the Office of the Board of Trustees of the town of Netherlands.
Perform the duties of the Office of the Board of Trustees of the town of Netherlands.
Mayor Taylor, next is Tanya Corvallin.
Tanya Corvallin, you have your own mic. Tanya, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I Tanya Corvallin do solemnly affirm.
I Tanya Corvallin do solemnly affirm.
That I will support and uphold the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and uphold the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Colorado.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Colorado.
And the ordinances of the town of Netherlands.
And the ordinances of the town of Netherlands.
And that I will faithfully and to the best of my skill and ability.
And that I will faithfully and to the best of my skill and ability.
Perform the duties of the Office of the Board of Trustees.
Perform the duties of the Office of the Board of Trustees.
Of the town of Netherlands.
Of the town of Netherlands.
Congratulations, Tanya.
And last, Tom Mahol.
Tom, raise your hand and repeat after me. I Tom Mahol do solemnly affirm.
I Tom Mahol do solemnly affirm.
That I will support and uphold the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and uphold the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Colorado.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Colorado.
And the ordinances of the town of Netherlands.
And the ordinances of the town of Netherlands.
And that I will faithfully and to the best of my skill and ability.
And that I will faithfully and to the best of my skill and ability.
Perform the duties of the Office of the Board of Trustees.
Perform the duties of the Office of the Board of Trustees.
Of the town of Netherlands.
Of the town of Netherlands.
Congratulations, Tom.
So Mayor Taylor, there is a resolution and an action item for you for the next and so I don't know if you want to go back, if you want to take a break and then go back to seats and get everyone situated.
I will take your advice.
So you'll want to, so the next item is appointment of town officers, of town staff. And so you will need to adopt the resolution before you, before any oaths are taken. So we'll let Mayor Taylor get situated and you have a new nameplate, Mayor Taylor. There we go. Look at that, just a little switcheroo. I know, he said he was going to take it when you left. He has to come back. It's fine. So do you want me to introduce this, Mayor Taylor?
Would you please?
I'd be happy to. So tonight before you has a resolution, resolution number 202224, appointing the following officers and per code we need to appoint each person. So myself as town administrator, Macy Caligaris as town clerk, Rita Six as town treasurer, Jennifer Fine Lovin as town marshal, and Jennifer Madsen as town attorney. So the question before you is, do you approve resolution 202224? And then if you do, we'll take the oath. That's the question before you.
Does anyone on the board, would anyone on the board like to speak on this topic? Does anyone have any concerns regarding the resolution?
No concerns.
All right.
Do you want to do public comment before?
And now we will do public comment. Would anyone like to speak on the resolution from the public? I am not watching a computer, so I'm counting on Macy to let me know if someone's raised their hand. I'm very low tech.
I'd like to speak that I'm against rehiring Madsen and town administrator Kathleen Chipai, 30-year resident, 18-year business owner.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak?
Macy, anybody raising their hand on the screen there?
If you would like to, you can hit star six and tell, talk on your phone, give, make a noise for us or raise your hand. And I'm seeing nobody, Macy? Very fine. All right, then I'll bring it back to the board. Would anyone like to speak or make a motion to regarding this resolution?
I'll make a motion.
Please.
I move to approve resolution 2022-24, approving the persons listed to serve as officers for the town of Netherlands.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Macy, would you call the rule, please?
Of course. Trustee apt. Oh, I'm.
You need a new list now, Macy.
Mayor Pro Tem Baumhofer.
Yes.
Trustee Taylor, or Mayor Taylor.
Yes.
Trustee Corvallin.
Yes.
Trustee Blakemore.
Yes.
And trustee Mahold.
Yes.
The resolution passes. I have to remember to say stuff like that now.
Yes.
Normally I just sit there and nod off, but now, now I have to pay attention.
Now your oaths, where you, if you'd like to do them up here again or from your seats, wherever you prefer.
I thought that worked pretty well, so let's do it up there.
Let's do it. I'll go first.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I Miranda Fisher do solemnly affirm.
I Miranda Fisher do solemnly affirm.
That I will support and uphold the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and uphold the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Colorado.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Colorado.
And the ordinances of the town of Netherlands.
And the ordinances of the town of Netherlands.
And that I will faithfully and to the best of my skill and ability.
And that I will faithfully and to the best of my skill and ability.
Perform the duties of the Office of Town Administrator.
Perform the duties of the Office of Town Administrator.
Of the town of Netherlands upon which I am about to enter.
For the town of Netherlands upon which I am about to enter.
Thank you.
Okay, next is Rita.
Raise your right hand, as you've already done, I'm just saying that for form. I Rita Six do solemnly affirm.
I Rita Six do solemnly affirm.
That I will support and uphold the Constitution of the United States.
That I will uphold and support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Colorado.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Colorado.
And the ordinances of the town of Netherlands.
And that I will faithfully and to the best of my skill and ability.
And that I will faithfully and to the best of my skills and ability. Perform the duties of the Office of Town Treasurer.
Perform the duties of the Office of Town Treasurer.
Of the town of Netherlands upon which I am about to enter.
Of the town of Netherlands of which I'm about to enter.
Uh, next is Macy Caligaris.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I Macy Caligaris do solemnly affirm.
I Macy Caligaris do solemnly affirm.
That I will support and uphold the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and uphold the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Colorado.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Colorado.
And the ordinances of the town of Netherlands.
And the ordinances of the town of Netherlands.
And that I will faithfully and to the best of my skill and ability.
And I will faithfully and to the best of my skill and ability.
Perform the duties of the Office of Town Clerk.
Perform the duties of the Office of Town Clerk.
Of the town of Netherlands upon which I am about to enter.
For the town of Netherlands for which upon I am about to enter.
So Mayor Taylor, I'm going to mix it up on you a little bit and we're going to do Attorney Madsen and then Jennifer Fine.
Raise your hand and repeat after me. I Jennifer Madsen of Widner Duran LLC do solemnly affirm.
I Jennifer Madsen of Widner Duran LLC do solemnly affirm.
That I will support and uphold the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and uphold the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Colorado.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Colorado.
And the ordinances of the town of Netherlands.
And the ordinances of the town of Netherlands.
And that I will faithfully and to the best of my skill and ability.
And that I will faithfully and to the best of my skills and abilities.
Perform the duties of the Office of Town Attorney.
Perform the duties of the Office of Town Attorney.
Of the town of Netherlands upon which I am about to enter.
Of the town of Netherlands about which I am about to enter.
All right, Jennifer Fine Lovin. And Mayor Taylor, we'd like to propose a little break after Jennifer's oath because we have some cake.
I am prepared.
And we'd like to celebrate.
I insisted on reciting my wedding vows without doing repeats, that I almost loved it, so I may not actually be married now, but thank you. Raise your right hand, Jennifer, and repeat after me. I Jennifer Fine Lovin do solemnly affirm.
I Jennifer Fine Lovin do solemnly affirm.
That I will support and uphold the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and uphold the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Colorado.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Colorado.
And the ordinances of the town of Netherlands.
And the ordinances of the town of Netherlands.
And that I will faithfully and to the best of my skill and ability.
And that I will faithfully and to the best of my skills and ability.
Perform the duties of the Office of Town Marshal.
Perform the duties of the Office of Town Marshal.
Of the town of Netherlands upon which I am about to enter.
Of the town of Netherlands upon which I am about to enter.
So Jennifer Marshall Fine Lovin, please stay and we have former acting town marshal, Marshall Johns, that's his new title, would like to come up.
So I want to congratulate Jen in her journey, sorry. I want to congratulate Jen through her journey of law enforcement of 20-some years, more than, more than I have been. She's way smarter than me, I can tell you that, but we're totally different people too. So welcome her to Netherlands like you guys have. She has a lot to give. She's an incredibly hard worker. She donates a ton of time. She thinks outside the box. We're fortunate to, to have her, honestly. So I'm going to go ahead and pin on her badge. She thought she was getting a new one, but she's getting a used one. So, well, we do have a budget to operate on. And then after that, I want to just do a little recognition with officers that are here that have some feats and accomplishments they've done over the years. Trust the people of town.
Larry, the mic.
It was just a regular open forum, it'd be great. I want to introduce to you guys Officer Eric Gette from the Netherlands Police Department. Come here, Eric. Eric's been here for over three years. He's seen a lot of the difficult time and shortage of labor and he's experiencing it again, which is really unfortunate, but that's just kind of where we are in law enforcement. Eric, since the time that I've been here, he's done more CPR on people than probably the fire department over here. I don't know why he's so lucky, but he is. I'll tell you that generally you don't get to save a life when you do CPR and these guys can, over here can tell you that. But the reality is Eric did get to help save somebody. He was first on scene, took over CPR on a call off of Hurricane Hill. Husband was doing CPR and the wife, Eric was able to take over and continue and help the fire department once they got going, got them, got them set up and stuff and then helped continue to keep the CPR going and other necessary stuff that whatever they do, right, to save lives at that point in time. So here is a medal of, excuse me, a lifesaving medal that I want to present to Eric. I'm just going to go ahead and show it to our audience. It is well-deserved. I'm not going to pin it on him because it's glued on here. It's not glued on here, but anyway, this is for you, Eric. You deserve it. You've done more than anybody else. I have one more and I need one more after that, but I was only able to get my hands on two, so we'll get into that here in a second. But thank you, Eric, for your dedication and time and all your hard work. The second of the third was going to go to Troy Hendricks. Troy is our administrative officer here in town. He started as my sergeant and quickly over time we learned that he was better in the office than out of the office and far more valuable. He's still a good officer, but he's way better inside, so we appreciate that. But he responded to a, a call again outside of town for the Boulder Sheriff's Office on a medical call up at Arapahoe Ranch. He started CPR, was the first one there, started CPR until our great fire department could come over. So he was key to saving that person's life. So Troy is going to get one, but since he's not here, he doesn't get this one today. This one today is going to go to Jen. Jen, come up here. So Jen's CPR lifesave, which we've done CPR many times, all of us have, had to do with a car that crashed into right almost next door to the seat, to the PD, excuse me. So maybe right place, right time, I don't know. I'm not sure where she came from, I don't remember, but the fact of the matter is she did CPR, she actually did CPR in the car on the patient and was instrumental in saving a life until firemen could come and take over and do what they do best. So Jen, this is for you. You can add it to your collection, ever-growing collection of medals, hopefully one day. And then I'd like JP to come up here. So JP is our newest officer, even though he doesn't seem all that new, but he's been here for over a year now. JP and Jen were unfortunately sent down Boulder Canyon on a horrific car crash. Actually, I don't think it started as that, but it ended up as that. There was two medical calls going on at the same time. JP actually did CPR on a young male, right? On a young male that it was obvious he wasn't alive. But we do CPR when people think that we have a chance to save them. It was obvious, to my understanding, that this young gentleman was not going to make it. But he couldn't stop. The reason he couldn't stop is because the family, the parents, had rolled up shortly afterwards and were on scene at the same time and realized that there was a horrific crash there, and their son was involved. So here's JP doing CPR as the parents are over here watching. Jen is attending to a whole nother patient. Fires coming from the bottom of the canyon, or from a little bit farther down the canyon coming up. They were on a fallen climber or something else. To one of the worst crashes that we've had in the canyon in some amount of time. So there was two fatalities in that, if I recall. Am I right? One? Okay. Anyway, so I recognize JP. He really deserves a medal for doing that, even maybe more so. Because when you're doing it, and you know this person doesn't have a chance, but you're still working, because you're working for the parents over here to show them like, hey, I'm laying it all out here for you. It's just as much as these guys did with the medal. So he deserves one, but it just doesn't fit the criteria, so nothing personal. But I want to recognize JP, you know, and all the first responders here, because this is what these guys do. They come out after hours, in the dark, early, cold, snowy, windy, like whatever. And we respond when the call comes in. So I just want to thank these guys, the Ned Fire Guys, Boulder Sheriff, Colorado Rangers. We're all here for your first responders, and thank you very much. And thank you to the public for all the years in service, and it's much appreciated.
So we now move on. Miranda?
To some cake.
To some cake. Oh, yes. Standby for cake.
I'm thinking like ten, ten fifteen minutes?
Ten fifteen minutes? We're adjourning for ten fifteen minutes. I'm gonna do this.
Do it.
Just because it's fun. There we go. Adjourning for ten fifteen minutes, and then we'll resume at... Let's resume at eight o'clock. We need to resume the meeting. Everyone, please end the conversations and have a seat.
Mayor Taylor, just want to confirm that Trusty Corvallon is up there. I'm hoping... Trusty Corvallon, are you back? Oh, you were there.
The mayor has left the building.
I think you're still here.
Alright, are we ready to resume?
Yes. Would you like me to introduce the next item?
Please introduce the next item.
I would love to. So in accordance with state statute, at the first meeting of the newly-elected Board of Trustees, you need to appoint a mayor pro tem. This mayor pro tem will serve as mayor when the mayor is absent from the town or for any reason where the mayor is temporarily unable to perform the duties of that office. Currently, Jonathan Baumhofer serves as the mayor pro tem. There has been a recommendation that Tom Mahold serves in that role. But the discussion before you is, who do you want to appoint to mayor pro tem? And then you'll adopt a resolution, and we've offered some recommended language for that.
Thank you, Miranda. So I would like to explain why I have nominated Tom Mahold as mayor pro tem. At the candidate's forum, the only person who said he wanted to be mayor was Tom Mahold. And so, since, as many people know, I'm going to be resigning this post June 1st, we need someone to take over the position of mayor who wants to be doing it. I would like to thank Jonathan Baumhofer for his two-year tenure as mayor pro tem. Thank you very much, Jonathan. And for the next two years, I'm proposing that the mayor pro tem be Tom Mahold. And so I'm going to go around the Board of Trustees to see if anyone has anything they would like to say about that. Let's start with you. Trusty Corvallon, any comments?
Well, since you're leaving in like a month, basically, we're saying that he's gonna be the mayor? Or are we going to put this back out to the public for mayor position? Or is that just the way it's gonna be?
That is a resolution we're going to be discussing today. I'll be making my recommendations at that time. Tom Mahold will not be mayor. He will be mayor pro tem, serving as mayor for the duration.
What?
He will be mayor pro tem, serving as mayor, until a new mayor is chosen.
Okay. Yeah, it's fine.
Trusty Blakemore, any thoughts or comments?
Yeah, I think we can't decide if we'll have an election for a new mayor or appoint a new mayor until Mayor Taylor steps down.
Yes, correct.
So that'll be June 1st, or shortly after that. So, no, I did think Eric Coons Asmel would really do a good job as mayor pro tem. And I did reach out to him. And unfortunately, he has so much going on with work right now.
Yes.
That he's unable to take on the interim mayor position. So I do support Tom Mahold as mayor pro tem. And as interim mayor, I think probably that will be something we'll discuss.
Later in this meeting.
Well, I think maybe when you resign, then we decide who the interim mayor is.
You may not have time. That's why we have a resolution today to discuss.
Okay.
Well, at least make our plans today.
Okay.
Well, and Trusty Blakemore, I want to clarify that whoever the mayor pro tem is that you select tonight will serve as interim mayor. You wouldn't appoint someone else in that role.
Okay, okay. So is that something...
Yes, that the mayor pro tem, so it's in this section of statute here that the mayor pro tem of Netherlands serves as a mayor when the mayor is absent, in which case, if the mayor resigns, that obviously creates that absence.
Yeah, I really did read that. Sorry. Okay, that's all I have to say.
Trusty Baumhofer. Wait, 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 stop. Mayor Pro Tem Baumhofer.
Uh-oh. I think this is a wonderful idea. Summertime is my busy time schedule, and being that Tom has stepped up and said, "I'd be willing to do this," I have absolutely no problem with it, and in full support of this. I believe we'll get into the discussion of what happens when Julian steps down the next resolution.
Trusty Mahold. Wait, stop. How do you pronounce the last name?
It's Mahold.
Mahold. Thank you.
If it's in Germany, it's Mahowald.
Please.
I'm willing to take it on. I think all of us have a lot to learn real fast. There's a lot of issues in front of us. I look forward to engaging, and I'm honored and delighted.
Very fine. So let's put this out to the public. Would anyone from the public like to speak on the possibility of, or make a recommendation for mayor pro tem, or discuss the proposal before?
Kathleen Chabai, thirty-year resident of East Magnolia and eighteen-year business owner, and I support Tom being mayor pro tem. And I support Tom being mayor pro tem.
Thank you, Kathleen. Anyone else? And I'm, since I am Luddite, I'm looking to Macy to see if anybody wants to speak. Very fine then. I bring it back to the board? Would, so would anyone care to make a motion regarding this resolution?
I can do that. I move to approve Resolution 2022-22, appointing Tom Mahold as the mayor pro tem.
Do we have a second? That's not long. Very good. Macy, would you please take the vote?
Trustee Corvallon?
Yes.
Now, is it trustee Baumhofer? Okay.
It's mayor pro tem Baumhofer now.
Okay, mayor pro tem Baumhofer?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
Trustee Blakemore?
Yes.
And trustee Mahold?
Mahold.
Do I vote? Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. She voted first.
Terribly sorry, I missed that. Thank you very much. The resolution passes. Tom, congratulations.
And now, yeah, some switching can happen. There we go. All right. So the next thing to tackle as a board is the appointments to advisory boards and commissions. So Resolution 2022-23. As a reminder, we need advisor liaisons to the Board of Zoning Adjustment, the Planning Commission, the Downtown Development Authority, Parks Recreation Open Space Advisory Board, Sustainability Advisory Board, and now the new, the Youth Advisory Board is the newest. We did ask for kind of email recommendations and tried to pull something together to the best of our ability. It is my understanding that there is a desire to discuss who we have set. But the current recommendation is for Julian Taylor to serve as the Board of Zoning Adjustment while we await, since there's now a vacancy. Karen Blakemore for the Planning Commission, trustee Corvallon for the Downtown Development Authority, Tom Mahold for the Sustainability Advisory Board, Eric Cooms Ismail for Parks Recreation Open Space Advisory Board, and Jonathan Baumhofer for the Youth Advisory Board.
Thank you, Miranda. So this is a proposed list. And anyone who is distressed or concerned about an appointment may certainly bring that up. And we can discuss if we need to shuffle these in any way. So I'm going to start with the board. And I'm going to start with trustee Corvallon. Trustee Corvallon, do you have any thoughts on this list?
No, that's fine. That's what I asked for. I've always had a lot of questions about what's going on at the DDA, so now I can ask them in person.
Very fine. Trustee Blakemore.
It all looks good to me. I was a little bit curious about the mayor serving on the BCA.
We're short a seat. I think that's why they gave me the easy job, because somebody's got to be there.
And it is very likely that that liaison will have to recuse themselves, given the nature of some of the applications that are reviewed. But you are with Mayor Taylor moving. You are short a trustee. Normally whoever that sixth trustee would be, would have been in that slot.
Yeah, I wonder if we want to double up to, you know, since Mayor Taylor won't be here long. And so is it appropriate to be assigned to advisory board?
I'm perfectly happy to attend the zoning advisory, the zoning adjustment.
Yeah, but the two applications that we do anticipate would, trustee would not be able to participate anyways.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, that's all I have to say.
So I get the easy one.
Question, does that mean I'm off the board now?
Correct.
Okay.
And so also same with trustee Blakemore, who is a commissioner, who would serve as the liaison, and that would automatically create that vacancy as well. So.
I'll take this home.
Take that. But we want the thing is in, and I can give Karen her commissioner slip. So yeah, so there, I guess just quickly, there is the annual reappointments on all boards and commissions. We have taken into consideration trustee Blakemore and trustee, and mayor pro tem Mahold's vacancies. And so we do encourage people to go onto our website and to apply, because every board has a vacancy. So civic engagement.
So trustee Mahold, any thoughts on this?
I waited two years for somebody to come forward with a variance request, but it never happened. That was the easiest board service I think I ever did. This, I had, I had put my hand up, as Tanya did, for DDA. I think we're in good hands. I think Tanya wants to do this a lot. I'm going to be pretty busy. And on the sustainability side, I just talked with Alan, there's a lot, there's a lot of things that I'm looking forward to stepping up to the plate to take on. So congratulations, Tanya. We're going to be, we've got a lot of things to deal with shortly.
Yeah.
And Mayor Taylor, can I just, obviously they're all publicly noticed meetings. So while they are liaisons, it is very often that there are other trustees or mayor, mayor pro tem, who do participate. And so if there are other boards, we strongly encourage you to join as a participant, to give feedback. You just wouldn't be the designated liaison.
You wouldn't have to write the report.
Right.
I'll take that.
Trustee Baumhofer, any thoughts?
Happy, it would be nice after many years being away from Teens Inc., working with youth, to kind of full circle, come back and reconnect with some of Ned's youth, as well as the staff at Teens Inc., so.
No, I'm glad. Those are, that's a very impressive group. Yeah. Very fine. All right. We put this out for public comment now. Anyone who would like to speak on the topic of this resolution, please step forward and speak. Hit star six. If you have a cell phone, raise your hand or just start speaking. Anything, Macy? All right. We bring it back to the board then. Does anyone have a motion or a comment?
So I can, I can read the motion. I move to approve Resolution 2022-23, appointing the persons listed in Attachment A.
Second.
Very fine. Macy, will you take the vote?
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
Trustee Baumhofer?
Yes.
Trustee Corvallon?
Yeah, yes.
Trustee Blakemore?
Yes.
And trustee Mahold?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem now.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
We'll get into the groove.
It's still yes.
Right. I was like, poor Macy is probably having to like, it's, there's a lot of movements. We got you. We're here.
My sheet looks like a mess over there.
I'm sure lots of exits crossed up. All right. So we stuck another item in here, your kind of first non-appointed action item, because we had a realization. So before you tonight is a draft ordinance 826, which we are bringing forward to you as an emergency ordinance, which means that five out of six of you need to vote yes. Back when COVID started, what the board had done when there was that emergency local disaster or declaration was to give me authority to issue temporary use permits, which would allow people to use their outside space for eating, drinking, also to do an expansion of, a temporary expansion of liquor boundaries, when we had to do the outdoor dining. When the local emergency declaration ended, that subsequently ended my authority. We didn't really think that would be an issue. All these entities who have currently outdoors services plan to come through the SRU process. However, that's a really lengthy process. It can take somewhere up to two months or more. And so that's hard for them to not be able to operate in that space pending their application. So what we're asking is that you reinstate that authority to myself and to Macy as the town clerk, so that we can continue those temporary use permits to get them through the SRU process, which everyone plans to. We just can't get them all before the Planning Commission in April. So currently we have that where it would be set to end September 15th, 2022. We do, I am confident we can get everyone through the SRU process in that timeframe, but are looking for that kind of immediate approval of this ordinance.
Thank you, Miranda. So let's bring it to the board first. Trustee Baumhofer.
So it sounds like this is more of a technical issue of making sure all the i's are dotted, t's are crossed, so to speak, and that every business is intending on bringing this through the formal SRU. This is just so that you're covered should anyone want to make a hassle for town and local businesses.
Well, right now, you know, we have current applicants who can't, their license expired. And so they didn't think to renew, because they didn't use the outdoor space in the winter. So they didn't think to renew, and then we rescinded the local emergency declaration. And so it was kind of this like, oh, had I known, I would have renewed, and I would have been good through June. Some did renew and are good through June, but we want to be able to extend those ones to get them through the SRU process. So.
Is it written into this that you will not be taking any new applicants, folks, that hadn't already been approved during the pandemic when you had this emergency power?
I don't think we did add that in.
So technically, if we did this, somebody could try to sneak in here, even though they would have to go through the SRU.
Jennifer, could they amend this ordinance?
It could be amended to put a provision in there that specifies it's only for extensions on temporary permits that had been previously issued. But it is only for a three-month permit to be able to use the space.
I don't think we need to amend it, just as long as everyone's aware that in doing so, we have an intent here, but are passing something that is a little bit open-ended. So I think this is fine, and I support doing it for our businesses. And I believe that they all will be coming back to us in an SRU.
Trustee Corvallon.
It sounds good to me. I don't have any questions.
Trustee Blakemore.
Guess I'm not concerned with what Jonathan brought up with, because I'm thinking we have some new businesses, like the bagel place. And maybe they did not have that variance established previously. So I think it would be fair if we treated all the businesses the same. I was wondering if we wanted to have the end date of this be the end of 2022. I know like the Mexican place, what is it? Trace, I had it written down, Trace Gringos. You know, they're south-facing, their patio, and I think it was open all winter. So I'm thinking, if we're thinking like September 15th is the end of the summer, the outdoor dining season, I think should meet. But, but Miranda, if you can get these all through the SRU process, and I trust that you can, because you're confident in it, then I think the September 15th date is okay.
We're actually only looking at, at this point, from the conversation, it is two going through the SRU process. The other is the Caribou Room that already went through it. They just now need to come back before you as the liquor licensing board, which they'll do in, in May. So, so yeah, it's actually only two, which I feel confident and to that point. There actually are some unique circumstances where like certain businesses may have included the outside in their kind of original applications before the board, or have sidewalk permits. There's a lot of unique things, but there are only two who will need to come back for that permit.
And which two, perfect?
Trace Gringos and Very Nice Brewing Company.
Okay, all right. Okay, so I'm, I'm good with the way it's written.
I agree. I think it was quite an oversight for people not to realize they had to renew it. But God bless them, they're here. They stayed with us through a rough time, and I'm really glad to have, to be able to sit outside again. And I think everything you've done has worked really well. Thank you for doing that and walking us through a tough period.
Thank you, Tom. Now we'll take it out to the public. Would anyone from the public like to speak on this emergency resolution? Star six, or raise your hand, or step up and speak?
So it's probably easier for me, Mayor Taylor, to look at the participant list than it is for Macy, so I'll be your person.
I will let you do that then. I'm turning to, I'm turning to Town Administrator Miranda to help me, since I'm a Luddite.
You have, you have no one, though, virtually, who wants to.
Okay. Then we bring it back to the board. It's an emergency resolution, so five of us would have to vote yes if it were to be approved. So I will put it back to the board and ask if anyone would like to speak, or if anyone would like to make a motion.
I seem to be making the motions tonight, so I'll continue. I move to approve ordinance number 826, extending the delegation of authority to town staff for approval of temporary modification of liquor licensed premises, temporary uses, and temporary use of right-of-way and declaring an emergency.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Macy, please call the vote.
Trustee Baumhofer?
Yes.
Trustee Corvallon?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Mahold?
Yes.
Trustee Blakemore?
Yes.
And Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have a vote and an approval. So you may now drink deep your power.
Thank you.
But for a limited time only.
Right.
So bear that in mind. But we all have to drink, so, yeah.
Okay, I'll let the businesses know. They'll be very.
Very good.
Very excited.
And we're on to a discussion item. And Miranda, would you introduce it, please?
Yes. So as I kind of spoke to already, when Mayor Taylor took his oath as mayor, it creates a vacancy for trustee. So per state statute, within the next 60 days, you'll need to decide how you fill that vacancy. You can choose to do so via an appointment, in which case people would submit a request, an application to seeking appointment, or you could do so through election. I know that some questions have been brought up with Mayor Taylor. You do not have to decide tonight, but you do have to decide within the next 60 days. So we just wanted to open up just kind of a discussion to see how the board was feeling, and if you were kind of leaning one direction or another.
Thank you, Miranda. I'd like to speak on this first. In all of my discussions with Miranda, I have been indicating that I think the only way to replace the mayor is through a special election. What we have going here is one trustee seat that is now vacant, because I'm now mayor, a mayor seat that's going to go vacant on June 1st, when I will be resigning, because I have a job outside of state. But also, something very important, one of the trustees, one of the current trustees, may also need to resign as a result of a job out of state. We do not know yet if that's going to happen, but it may. And if it does, we certainly want to include that trustee's position in the special election. I have been told by that trustee that we will know by mid-May if that person will remain on the board or will have to resign. Therefore, I suggest that when I resign June 1st, in some early June meeting, I would like to propose that the Board of Trustees authorize a special election for a mayor and either my seat or two seats as trustee. That's what I would propose. And if we find that some other board member is leaving, we're going to have to take that as a special case and do an appointment, because otherwise, we won't have a quorum. So the crucial thing is to have a quorum after I've left. And if possibly this other trustee leaves, you're going to have a razor-thin quorum at that point. So if anybody else leaves, now you're in big trouble. But, and if that happened, you may have to appoint someone on an emergency basis, but I don't think you will. I believe that we can have a special election, and through that special election, the people may choose a new mayor and one or two new trustees. So that is my suggestion. Trustee Blakemore, any thoughts?
So we have a mayor and six trustees. The quorum would be four. Okay. So currently, we're short one. We're going to be short another, down to five, when you leave. And then if the, that other trustee leaves, that would give us four. I have a vacation planned to Norway for three weeks in July. So it would, it would be hard for me to do the. Norway for three weeks in July, so it would be hard for me to do the meeting remotely because of time difference, and I'm going to be backpacking, but I'll look into those details with you, Miranda, a little bit later. You know, talking to residents as I was campaigning, there's a strong desire to, for, the citizens want to elect the mayor. They do not want the mayor to be appointed. So I'm in agreement with that, and I didn't talk too much about the trustee replacement, but I think giving the citizens more control over who's representing them is best. So I'm in favor of a special election to replace the two seats vacated by Mayor Taylor and trustee Taylor, and then also for a second trustee seat if we need that.
I just realized I will be single-handedly vacating two seats. How interesting. Okay. Trustee Mahold.
I think I agree with our approach. One quick question, Miranda. Ballpark, what does something like this cost, and do we have the budget?
Yeah, we, it's human, it's human power elections. And so we do, because we now do everything in-house, we formerly used to contract with Business Connection, which was where a lot of the cost came from. It's about $1,000 because it's postage and paper. So, so yes, we do, we do have the financial means. We budgeted $6,000. We did have a legal firm that helped us with that community center tax, and so this election probably ran us about $3,000, leaving us in a remaining $2,000 to $3,000.
The election, this election was well-run. To come down to just six votes that you had to double-check, that was just really inspiring. It was a lot of people that put a lot of time in.
Yeah, and those election judges are very interested in serving again. We think it went really well. Huge shout-out to Macy's. That human power is Macy's power.
Yeah, yeah. Well done. So I concur. I think this is the way to go.
Thank you, Trustee Mahold. Trustee Corvallin.
I also think we need to have an election. The two seats vacated by trustee Mayor Taylor, the potential of losing another trustee, and then, but then I'm concerned, what if Mayor Protem decides to run for mayor, and then we're in the same situation we had when you decided to run for mayor, where we can't put his seat up until, is there any way that if he would be running? I mean, I just like, oh, just like never-ending. I guess we'll worry about that later, but the, this is what I think we need to do, is have an election, and we need to let people know right away that this is what's happening, and we set a date for it, and let people know that we need people to run. Otherwise, it's going to get appointed. And with plenty of notice, because I felt like the trustee positions and everything we had that was due end of January, I didn't feel like it was talked about very much. And like, it should be like prominent on the website. It should maybe, you know, I don't know, but I just really think a lot of people were like, I had no idea, you know, blah, blah, blah. They're not paying attention. So that, I think the minute we decide, we need to start letting people know, okay, this is the deadline for your signatures, and when would that be, and when is the election? So we should decide that ASAP.
Thank you, Trustee Corvallin. Trustee Baumhofer.
Yeah, I believe at this point, a special election is in the best interest of the town, the citizens, as well as functionality of this board and being able to move forward. I do have the same question as Trustee Corvallon, that currently, just judging by the fact our current mayor ran unopposed, whoever runs for mayor will most likely be somebody sitting on this trustees right now. So how does that work?
So we actually had four people reach out interested in mayor after the ability to do a write-in candidate had closed. And so to speak to Trustee Corvallon's point, elections are run by statute, so it's like so many days, 91 days before an election is when you release nomination petitions. 71 days before the election is when those close. So 60, I think in 65 days is when writing candidates end. So we can't accept it after that timeframe. But I think the word is out there, and more people are interested in wanting to serve. Unfortunately, I wish that they had earlier, but I've had quite a few conversations with people who are interested in mayor or trustee at this point and want to run.
So what happens if one of the current trustees runs for mayor, gets elected? Are we still going to have to appoint?
Yes.
A trustee then?
Or you have.
There is no way around this in Colorado statute law?
Correct. There is no way around it. So you will need to appoint.
They haven't gotten yelled at for that.
Yeah, I remember that when I first realized that I had to leave the state, I assumed I'd be able to say, oh, well, I'm going to resign at this date certain, and we could start an election. But no, I have to be gone before we can start planning the election. I have to vacate the seat and walk away. And that's what triggers the election, and that's the way the statute is put together. I'd read the statute, and I thought, is that a gray area? No, I've been persuaded that's not gray area. So.
I have a question about, suppose that Tom runs for mayor, Mayor Protem Mahold, could we say that the, if he does get that position, the next highest, the trustee candidate with the next highest votes could fill his seat? Can we, like, announce that before the election, so it's agreed to?
I think your challenge is, you have to adopt a resolution outlining how you're going to fill the vacancy. And so, correct me if I'm wrong, Attorney Madsen, I think that could be the intent of the Board of Trustees, but I don't think you would then state that was automatic. The first action of that new board would be to adopt the resolution, appointing that fifth person, or whatever, the second person as the new trustee.
Is this something we can make apparent in the petitions and ask in the petitions, are you willing to, if not elected, would you be willing to be appointed?
So the nomination petition already asks kind of that question. It's worded a little funky, and so I think we could fix the wording of that. But in essence, it asks, like, if you're unable to serve, who would you want to serve on your behalf? And it lists like three lines, and no one ever fills that out, because it's worded really weird. And so I think we could clarify that of, and maybe that's, you know, say, Mayor Protem Mahold, you identify maybe three people that could fill your seat as trustee, and that's something you could take into consideration.
So my concern is if we, if we don't make it really clear before people vote, they may vote differently, knowing that, you know, we'd fill that seat with the next, with the candidate with the next highest votes, or not doing that. You know, they may vote for, like, if we have two seats available, they may vote for one in one case, and two in the other case. This is pretty, so, yeah, I don't really like making that decision after the fact because of that.
The problem is that the Board of Trustees that's making the decision as to whether to appoint or hold a special election is the Board of Trustees that's sworn into office after that election. So you can't make the decision in advance of the election.
Okay.
Now, Attorney Madsen, can I, so I think as, as the clerk, I mean, obviously, we can't, we have to be very mindful of how we approach the election. Could the Board of Trustees just continue to reiterate that that is their desire and intention in a board meeting? I don't think we would obviously put it on a ballot or anything, but could they do that?
Certainly. I mean, you could say that that's your intention, and there's nothing wrong with that, but that, but it's not, it's not an action that you could take.
I tell you, what would really help us would be ranked choice voting. So if we were to, well, in some future board, establish ranked choice as our voting method, then you'd be able to easily say, oh, this guy's number two. That's an interesting thought.
I think the question then becomes just statutorily, we have to handle mail and ballots in a very specific way, and so I'm not sure we have that ability.
It, to some degree, it is important to leave it up to the next board, because we could see a situation where the people who were elected to the board were elected by a sizable majority over the others who were not elected to the board. Were that the case, that is to say, if those who had not won the position on the board received very, very few votes, this could be taken into account as a vote against, and that may mean we would need to, you would need to ask for additional applicants. But if that doesn't happen, if it's really close, then that would be a perfectly reasonable thing for the board to do. So I think it is definitely something we leave up to the next board, but certainly, if we make a recommendation, we would hope the next board would take it seriously.
So for the intensive tonight's discussion, we seem to all be in agreeance that special election is the way to go. We are aware that there's a potential that even after a special election, we might have to appoint a BOT member. So.
And I'd like to just offer a point of clarification. I know the question is, when is the election to occur? Mayor Taylor has to resign, and then you have to adopt that resolution stating that this is how you're going to handle it. So I can't tell you what that date is today, because I think the assumption is that on June 7th, that that's when you would adopt, that's the last time you can adopt this resolution. But circumstances could change. I mean, just know that it will be more than 91 days, because we need to allow us some time to get the nominations petitions out and do what we need to do, but our intention would be to, to hold that as soon as possible.
Wait, wait a second. 91 days, he'll already be gone, and if somebody else quits, we're not going to have quorum. Can't we do it sooner?
No.
Statutorily, it's. Can't we get this started earlier, because he has to resign before we can get started on it? Can we at least?
Correct.
Tanya, I think we'll still have quorum if a trustee needs to resign.
If the other person quits or has to move.
We'll have four.
Yeah, but that doesn't leave any wiggle room. So nine, so can we officially, like, after this meeting, say in 91 days, we're going to have an election?
No, because Mayor Taylor has not resigned.
He has to resign in the 91 days after that?
Well, if that's the intention, is to have the election with the mayor position and the trustee, then yes, Mayor Taylor would have to resign.
If I resign now, and.
That's not till, like, September.
If I resign now.
And then he resigns now. I mean, this is too ridiculous.
I'm not seeing the issue.
You're not seeing the issue. You have to wait for you to resign on June, and then 91 days is the election. So we're missing, we'll be missing a trustee's position that you vacated and a mayor position that you vacated, because the, we're still going to be down, I believe, two trustees.
Yes.
Because minimum, and then if we lose the other one, we'll be down three. Because Tom will then become the mayor pro temp. Your trustee spot's already.
I'm already mayor pro temp.
Huh?
Tom is.
He'll be the mayor. He'll be the mayor. So he'll become the mayor. Well, once he leaves, he becomes the mayor, acting mayor.
Yes.
And then his trustee spot's empty, your trustee spot's already empty, and then if somebody else leaves, that's three trustee spots that will be empty until 91 days from the day you leave.
That's what I am watching for. In May, we will know if the other trustee is going to leave. If the other trustee is not going to leave, we got a quorum plus one, and that's not so bad, then I resign.
So I agree with Tanya. I think it's important for us to have the permanent mayor on the board as soon as possible, for a lot of different reasons. So I would be in favor of a very soon resignation from Mayor Taylor.
So if I were to resign now, and the other trustee were then to resign, you would still be in the same boat. You'd have roughly a quorum, you'd have a quorum, a very thin layer quorum. But if the other trustee is not going to leave, that's excellent.
So all I'm, all I'm saying is that we'll have a permanent mayor a month and a half sooner if you were to resign today.
Yes, but then you'd have to appoint more people to the board. Whereas if I wait, we may include all of the vacancies, except for the possible one for Tom, in the special election.
I, I think the special election can still include all the vacancies.
Not if I'm not gone.
Actually, won't be able to because of nomination petitions. You have to be mindful that nomination petitions close 20 days after. And so if that trustee resigns after nomination petitions and writing candidates close, we cannot include them on the ballot.
Then, then we could appoint that one spot.
Correct, yes.
So I'm, I'm looking at the mayor position as being a little bit different than the trustees.
I agree.
And I think, you know, we have to learn to work together as a team. There's a lot of, of learning for the mayor to do. I had three points, but I forgot what the third one is right now. I might remember later.
All right. Thank you, Trustee Blakemore. Trustee Mahold.
It's confusing, but I think by May, the smoke will clear a little bit.
Did I ask everyone to speak on the board? Did I miss anybody?
Curious question. Can we appoint to date certain? So let's say, could we appoint to BOT members until the special election? No.
No, yeah, whoever you appoint will serve out the term, which, again, will then be just for two years, and then they'll be a part of the 2024 election. I mean, even though it's a four-year, you're vacating a two-year term, but, you know, say, Mayor Protem Mahold is mayor, that person, even though you're vacating a four-year term, that person would only serve two years and then be part of that election. Yeah.
I was hoping this would be easier, but it kind of isn't. All right. We'll send this, set this out to the public. Would anyone from the public like to speak?
Kathleen Chipai Magnolia Starroot. Julian, you're smarter than to know, that you just had a revelation tonight that you are the reason two seats will be open on the board. I know you're smarter than that. I've been saying it for four months. I don't understand why you took the oath of office. And I'm going to say this, if you want to protect yourselves to have a quorum, you should be doing what you did in, what this town did in 2016, when Chris Larson ran against two candidates, the ballot said you can vote for, pick the top four, even though there was only going to be three openings. And it was even though only, if Chris had lost, there would have only been three openings. Chris won, so there were four openings and the top four people. Then you changed the rules for this election. We knew Julian was going to be vacating a spot, and we could have put on the ballot, just like historically we had in 2016, pick the top four. You refused, okay? You refused and helped create this problem we have. And what this board should do right now to redeem any sensibility of what just occurred in this past election is to appoint number four to the spot that we knew was going to be vacated by the mayor. If you all think that the town wants to vote on the mayor separate in a separate election, that is fine. But the appointment, and it's not just one person who might be vacating, it might be two people, because from what has been said at these public meetings, Jonathan might also choose to lose. We're talking about Eric taking a job in another community. So I think it's urgent that the board appoint number four from the last election that was literally two weeks ago, and the people did vote, okay? That person did get votes, and that seat was denied them, and I believe unlawfully, and it's bothersome to me that we're changing the rules again. And now we're going to change them again and say, well, maybe, how can we appoint somebody after the next election? How about we focus on keeping a quorum with the people who just ran and committed themselves and donated their time? And the two people, we had five openings, we knew we were having five openings. Somehow, two people didn't get on. And now we're two weeks later. You shouldn't have taken the oath of office, in my opinion. And you helped create this problem along with you for not being transparent. If you were going to take, even apply for a job out of state, you should have announced it publicly. So we would have known this, because other people would have stepped up for mayor. And I, I personally think that the two people that didn't get on the board, and now we have this problem, have a legal right to actually sue the town, especially now that you're going to make them run against other candidates. I think it's appalling, and it really looks like there was an intentional screw job done. And it really looks like there was an intentional screw job done to the two people who volunteered their time and energy to this community.
Would anyone else like to speak?
Yeah, this is Billy Giblin. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, Billy, go ahead.
Billy Giblin. I live in Old Town on Tilden Street, um, on the Planning Commission of BZ. Yeah, we just, I would like to see all those seats go back up for, um, public election. I think the public deserves to decide. I think the, I could, to be quite honest, the manner in which the candidates ran and the slate of three of the candidates put a very bad taste in a lot of people's mouths. And I do know that people are considering a run for trustee and, you know, as well as mayor. So I think, um, as much as, you know, I do appreciate that those guys, you know, did put in the time they did and put their hat in when they did. I think other people are willing to now. And, um, I do think it needs to go back up for, um, for, uh, for a popular vote, for, um, for the mayor's seat and the one or two trustee or possibly another trustee seat. And I think Julian should stay on now for some stability for even a short time because I do think, I agree with him, that ultimately mid-May, like Tom said, a lot of, uh, some smoke will settle and we'll be able to understand, you know, whether this other person is leaving or not. That's my opinion. Thanks for my time. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Billy. Would anyone else like to speak?
This is Billy Giblin. I just want to say, I mean, I myself am considering a higher office. For me, it comes down to bandwidth for the four-year-old and the eight-year-old. But, um, and I know other people are too, so.
Very good. I'm glad, I'm very glad, Billy. Anyone else? All right. I'll bring it back to the board. This is a discussion item, so we're not going to vote on anything. But I think I've heard everyone's view on it. Is there anyone, would anyone else like to speak further on this topic? Not hearing anyone? Thank you very much. We will move on to the next agenda item.
This is yours. I'll let you...
This is my agenda item. So I attended a planning commission meeting and I was very impressed. The public was invited to speak, as the public is always invited to speak. And it was a controversial topic. And yet there was discussion with the public. Questions placed to the public, placed by the public, to the board and to the commission and the commission interacting with the public. I know that we are often confronted with the case where people come before the board and speak and we sit and just listen. When that happens, my feeling is that the public isn't fully aware that they have been heard. There are also cases where a member of the public will make a statement and then ask if the board has questions. And we have trouble managing the three minutes when that happens, as we saw in the last meeting. Managing the three minutes for the person to speak and then to discuss with the board turns out to be kind of complicated. A lot of times people will step up and they'll just make a very simple statement, let the board know about an appointment or something like that, a meeting of some sort. And those are very simple. But sometimes someone makes a statement that is interesting and complicated. And so what I would like to propose is that this board add an additional three minutes for clarifying questions following the three minutes that the person speaks. The person would speak for three minutes. We would make absolutely sure they were uninterrupted. But if anyone on the board had a question about what the person had said, we allocate an additional three minutes for clarifying questions and discussion. It's an optional three minutes, but it would be timed and it would allow the person to make their full three-minute statement, followed by three minutes of discussion with the board if needed. That is what I would like to suggest. And I would like to hear the board's thoughts on that suggestion. I'd like to begin with, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Mahold. I'm, I'm doing that because I want to make sure I'm saying Mayor Pro Tem Mahold.
Mahold.
Mahold, Mahold. Thank you very much. Yes.
A, a question. Okay, I'm, I'm just mentally going through this. The, the person makes their three-minute comment. Then a, a second three-minute clock starts, at which point we can ask questions. And then within that three-minute, um, segment, envelope, all the back and forth happens inside of that three minutes.
Yes, the planning commission had a fairly long discussion with the public. We're more time constrained. And so, yes, I'm still proposing a three-minute clock optionally.
Great.
If, if, if the discussion happened.
Okay. So practically, um, that's one or two questions and, and you'd have to be pretty tight in your response.
Yes, it's, it's not a quick, it's, it's, uh, it's still pretty quick. I agree.
Good. Well, it's, it's, it keeps us, it keeps people focused.
Keeps us disciplined.
Yeah, I, I, I support it.
Okay. Trustee Baumhofer.
I like the idea of this. Is this the entire BOT has three minutes or each member, each trustee?
It would be, the three minutes would be assigned to the speaker from the public, the person who has made the statement. So that's three minutes for everybody on the board to ask a question if they need to. Hopefully, it's just one or two questions.
I like the idea of experimenting with this as long as the board doesn't feel an obligation to respond to every speaker.
Yes.
Only take that opportunity when it is beneficial to the public.
Yes, yes. Trustee Blakemore.
So I'm on the planning commission. And, um, yeah, I really, um, think it's effective how we can ask clarifying questions of the, um, the, the public speaker. And we don't have anything written in our, um, rules about that. And it's always up to the person running the meeting, I think, to decide whether they're going to allow, um, questions. I, I, I think limiting it to, um, clarifying questions is appropriate. And, um, so you don't get into, um, arguments.
It is, of course, the responsibility of the mayor to see to it that, that doesn't happen. Yeah.
So, and, and for me, um, when I'm asking clarifying questions, it's because I want to understand a little bit better.
Yes.
What the, where the speaker is coming from, what their experiences have been. So, um, that would be my intent with the questions. So, yeah, I, I think it's a good idea.
At least as an experiment. Trustee Corvallin.
Yeah, I agree with everybody else. I think it's, nothing wrong with it. Hopefully, it doesn't happen every time to every public comment, um, so that we can get on with the agenda. But I'm also, I just want to backtrack a little bit on our last discussion item. What did we decide? I didn't feel like we had a conclusion. I felt like we had people from the public. I don't remember really wrapping it up amongst us.
Perhaps I would recommend finishing this discussion and then, uh, just kind of make a motion to, to revisit the prior discussion.
All right, yeah, I'm done with this one.
Okay. So, um...
Can I request a five-minute pit break real quick and then revisit the election discussion?
We will adjourn for five minutes and return at 9:05.
Just, you did not do public comment for this item?
Public comment now.
Don't I quickly do public comment for this one? For three minutes.
Three minute? All right, let's go to public comment then for now.
This is Billy Giblin again, um, Old Town Ned. And, um, being on the PC, I agree with what Karen said, that the ability to talk, talk with the public commenters, is a great thing that we're able to do. Yeah, this is actually Old Town, sweetie. But having that interaction with the people who are making the public comment really is super valuable for clarifying, clarifying things. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you, Billy. Anyone else?
Kathleen Chipai, 30-year resident, East Magnolia, 18-year business owner. I support, uh, communicating with the public. I think my only, uh, it was happening anyways. The mayor, last mayor did it whenever he wanted. I just worry about discrimination of the fact that, um, the last mayor would have never asked me a question about anything I said, but then go on and on with other people. I think that's, uh, might be what triggered, uh, some of this with Julian because I know, uh, Tanya, at one point, when I was cut off at three minutes mid-sentence with no notice of any kind, uh, after other people prior me had been able to go on beyond their three minutes. So that's the kind of thing I worry about is, um, how and when this will be used. And, um, but I do believe it's a, a benefit to the public if everyone was treated fairly and actually had a response from board or questions because I know they're out there. So that's my comment.
Thank you. Would anyone else from the public like to speak? Bringing it back to the board. Do I have a motion to take a break? Is that what we've got here?
Yes.
Shall we take a break in the middle of this or do we need to complete this before we take the break?
Well, I would suggest as far as concluding this discussion, to ask for a nod of four in terms of, um, moving forward with the...
So let's, let's go through this. I think we can do this fairly quickly. We need a nod of four to make this a part of the next meeting. Trustee Blakemore, do we have a nod?
Yes.
Trustee Corvallin, do we have a nod?
Yes.
Trustee Baumhofer, do we have a nod?
Yes.
Trustee Mah, uh...
Mahold.
Mayor Pro Tem Mahold, do we have a nod?
We do.
We have a nod of four. This is how the next meeting will be conducted. Thank you very much. And we're going to take a break until, uh, 9:05. Well, nevermind, 9:10. We'll return at 9:10 after a break. And then we can revisit the previous discussion if we would like to. All right, let's bring it back. Get ready to continue the meeting. All right, resuming the meeting at nine ten. Uh, do we have a motion to revisit the previous topic?
Um, I would like to make a motion to revisit the previous topic. I don't feel like I have a clear path of what the direction we're taking on this. Um, and I would like to set a timeline for the action of what we're gonna propose to the public becomes aware of what's occurring.
All right. Uh, do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Very fine. Macy, would you take a vote?
Trustee Blakemore? Can I ask a clarifying question? Are we just voting on whether we're revisiting that discussion?
This isn't a vote, it's just a discussion.
Okay, yes.
Mayor Protem Mahold?
Yes, no questions.
Trustee Baumhofer?
Yes.
Trustee Corvallon? And Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
Thank you.
So, um, Trustee Corvallon, this is in, in your court. How, how would you like to proceed further with the discussion?
Well, um, so what's, what did we decide? We're, we're gonna do an election. Uh, we have to wait for June first to put that out there. Uh, by then we will know if there's gonna be one, two, and a, one trustee spot and the mayor's spot, both vacated by Taylor, or perhaps the other trustee spot. And then can we pass a resolution between now and then that states that the runner-up can fill in, uh, a spot should, should Tom decide to even run. He may not want to, but if he runs and wins, we should have some kind of stipulation that the runner-up, maybe we could just have this be like a permanent resolution in the town, um, for policies. Is that a possibility? Should a-
No.
I just don't wanna have to go through this all over again.
It would be an expressed desire of the Board of Trustees, but we would not, I don't believe a term of mad, so we would adopt that via a resolution?
No.
Can we have an expressed desire if everyone has a majority that the runner-up, if, if, and this is a big if, Tom needs to speak for himself, of course, if he were decided to run for actual mayor, decides he likes being pro tem and wants to be the mayor and he wins, so that the runner-up takes that, so we're not back to where we are right now?
My, my concern with that is that the voters wouldn't know that.
Well, the voters would know. We would tell them that's what's happening. If-
On the ballot?
On the ballot, yes. Because if, if, and I'm, I don't wanna speak for Tom, but let's just, I am, I'm sorry, Tom. Um, if he decides he likes being the mayor and wants to run, um, that would be on the ballot and we could put that on the ballot that should this candidate win mayor, that seat, his trustee seat will be vacated, which is obvious, but maybe not to everybody, and that runner-up would then take that third spot or second spot depending on how many trustee spots were.
So that's not something we can put on the ballot. The ballot needs to reflect how many seats are available. Um, so again, it's a situation as if, if say Mayor Protem Mahold takes oath, it creates that vacancy, but Mayor Protem Mahold can always choose not to.
Of course.
So therefore you would not elect for his position because he could choose, again, this hypothetical situation, could choose not to accept that mayoral role.
If, if we could do that, then I would say, I'm resigning in, in ninety days, so let's start an election now to fill my seat. But we can't because we know that I'm gone. The statute seems to be fairly clear on this. I have to be gone. The trustees have to be gone. That is what triggers the election.
Right, so the-
Unless I, unless I am mistaken, and Jennifer, help me.
The statute speaks to vacancy. A vacancy must be created in order to then start this process. And so a vacancy isn't created for mayor until Mayor Taylor resigns.
Okay, so let's stick with one, let's just stick with the reality that we have. He will resign June first. We have one trustee spot and the mayor's spot that will be vacated from trustee Taylor. Perhaps we have one more, uh, vacated from a fellow trustee that quits or moves. Um, when is the soonest we can have a selection? And can we start getting organized for this and letting the public know?
So you, so if, if that was the timeframe we were looking at, then at your meeting on June fourth, you would adopt a resolution that you want to have a special election, that it would be a mail-in ballot, my assumption, and who your designated election official would be? And then from there, we would start the timeline, um, and we could release the nomination petitions the next day if that was kind of the path in which we were to move forward with. That's what we did this year, is that we released nomination petitions, um, that day that the board voted on that resolution.
By mid-May, we will know what the election will cover. That's the important thing. And so we could start planning in mid-May. It doesn't mean we can trigger the beginning of the election process.
We are guaranteed to be down one trustee spot until sometime in September or whatever.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Well, uh, okay, so is that what the path we're all gonna choose, that we all kind of decided that's what we want as an election?
I, I think the issue is, is we've all decided that we want an election for the mayor position, um, because-
What are we gonna do about this trustee spot that's open right now? Do we wanna appoint that so we don't have to wait until September by putting it out to people and, I mean, I don't know. It seems like quorum's gonna, might be tough over the summer.
I will leave that to the board. Does the board want to appoint someone?
Yeah, I don't want to, but I also don't wanna wait till September.
So I, I think there's some benefit in doing that.
Okay.
You know, if we, um, because we'll have, fill the seat sooner rather than, than later, um, and we're worried about having a quorum moving forward, um, and then the question is how we appoint that person? Do we just appoint the person who had the next highest votes or do we, um, have people apply for the position?
I, I would argue that, uh, the world changes every day. We have a slightly different world now. We certainly know we have a number of people who are wanting to run for the Board of Trustees, and I believe we should allow them in. Um, and if the other people who ran and did not succeed in the election would like to apply as well, they certainly may. That would be my feeling. And then from the applications, the board could appoint someone to be that trustee. Sure.
Yeah, I, uh, yeah, um, how do we move forward on that? I guess we need to hear from the other trustees-
Absolutely.
-what their thoughts are.
So, uh, so Mayor Protem Mahold, what, what do you think about that?
Um, I, I hear what Kathleen Chippey was saying about the two that ran and didn't get here.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I can see that, definitely see the merit i- in that, um, but at the same time, I think you're right there. It's, we're in a different world now. Um, generally, uh, the folks that did choose to run, the, the issues haven't changed significantly. I would welcome them to run again, but having talked with some of them, I'm not sure that they will.
Um, so I think that, um, I, I, I think there's some merit, as trustee Blakemore said, it,
it, dealing with the one trustee position that we can, um, sooner rather than later and, because I, I really sense a possible, um, uh, witching hour where, where we don't have a, a quorum to proceed.
Mm-hmm.
So we have, uh, so it's gonna be really confusing to the public. Um, and I think we need to, it's gonna take a s- a certain amount of outreach, uh, to talk about what we're doing in language that people understand with appropriate time to digest it.
Mm-hmm. Trustee Corvallon, what are your thoughts on that?
I don't know. I really think we have to do an election, so I guess we're just, I mean, I guess at this point, I'll just take a gamble and we'll just see what happens over the summer. If we don't meet quorum, we don't have a meeting. That's that. Um, you know, um, I just feel like us appointing is exactly what people were not wanting us to do. I mean, when I talked to the public during the election and the whole discussion about the vacancies, they were like, oh, this is just so you guys can appoint somebody, like, you know, and like, so I'm a, I mean, as much as I want to do it this way, uh, 'cause I don't wanna wait and I, I wouldn't mind getting, uh, you know, six good applicants and us hashing it out, but at the same time, we've done this with some of the other positions that have come up and, you know, a lot of times the public wasn't happy with the outcome. And, and so I just, I guess, I guess what I'm saying is I guess we have no choice what, but to wait and for me, for an election for everybody and everything, and I'm just really disappointed that it has to be not till September, like, we can't just get started on it right away. Um, but I guess that's just the way it is. So I'm not, I'm pretty unhappy right now, um, about this position that we're all in and, um, we'll just see who can make it this summer and if we can't make quorum for whatever reason, then town will have to not deal with our decisions and just move forward.
Thank you, Trustee Corvallon. Trustee Baumhofer?
Seems like we're all in agreement where we wanna have a special election for the mayor position. We are aware that election will not only be for the mayor, but for the trustee position. The discussion currently that we are having disagreements on is whether or not to appoint someone or to hold out for this potential third position, 'cause we don't know if it's gonna happen. I guess my argument is we know we have one position that is open currently. If the other three members of the public that had ran in this election were in our audience, I would make a motion we appoint tonight. They are not here. I have chatted with some of them. I'm not sure if they're interested. So what I would suggest tonight, because this is a discussion item and no matter what, we can't take an action until May third, our next meeting, right? Is that we direct town staff to reach out to the previous candidates, ask them if they're interested in being appointed, provide them with an appointment application, and during that time, we nominate as trustees the mayor to work with town staff to know that and we can bring that, 'cause as the mayor, you can put this as an action item, appointment of trustees. If the three members of the public who ran are not interested in being appointed to, we have our decision made for us. We wait until a special election. If one of them is willing to be appointed, we appoint them for a two-year term. Then we run a special election for the mayor and the trustee position, and then we cover having quorum. We also have given, say, to the public, because the only reason that we are down one is because of a funky hiccup in state statute that somehow doesn't process, that your mayor is most likely gonna be a former trustee, and that a lot of the times, they might become mayor in the middle of their term, not at the end. So that's what I would suggest to this board, is we make no decisions tonight. We reach out to the previous folks who put their names out there, ran for the position of trustee. If they are willing to now be appointed by this current board for a two-year term, we do that May third.
So I, I think then we need to agree that we would appoint one of those candidates if they were interested.
What if some other people, other members of the public were also wanting to be considered for this?
They'll have the opportunity for a run for a trustee position in the special election 'cause it is both for the mayor position and the trustee position. Therefore, you give credit to the people who ran in this previous election and any new person who wants to run has the ability to run in the special election. We're not chapping or hindering the ability for new people to get elected. My argument would be, we could let the public know. Obviously, we couldn't because if these new people didn't know when the election was, it's state statute. It's the same thing every year. So I don't care about the new people who wanna get on. They'll have the opportunity to sign on the special election and we're all in agreement we're having a special election. The issue is, are we gonna shoot for the gun during vacation time? Unknown. That's, I mean, one person goes on vacation right now, we're done. And there's no way that you can just say, "Town staff, continue to make decisions without a BOT." That's not how state statutory towns work. So the responsible thing to do right now would be to reach out to the previous candidates and if any of them are willing to be appointed, we appoint them to a two-year term.
I just wanna correct something that you said, Jonathan. Um, if we do appoint a trustee, um, then we just have to fill the mayor's seat with the special election.
Right, 'cause the other trustee is unknown at this point.
Then, okay, then we do that. That's my argument. They were, they're, they, we had folks that ran in this election. They were aware of that time. We're gonna have a special election for mayor. If they're interested in trustee, they can be interested in mayor and run for mayor. There's a good-
So we, uh, you're saying we reach out to David Saitz and Riley, is it McAllister? Is that the name?
There's a good chance they might say, "No, I don't wanna be appointed," but-
Yeah, right. Um, yeah, I mean, sure. It's either that or, or nothing. That's kinda how I feel. I don't feel like we should just take new candidates right now that didn't go through the process, um, even though there might be somebody that's really qualified and that is gonna be amazing.
I would say not for appointment.
Yeah, I agree with that. It just doesn't seem fair. It seems-
Then we hold off for special election and to make the decision for us.
So, so why, why would we not want to accept other, uh, applications from other individuals?
Because we already currently as a BOT have an election results with numbers for those two individuals, so we can very clearly just look at the number of people who voted for them and say, "Yeah, we're gonna appoint you because you had this number of votes." We-
What would be David Saitz first?
If he was willing, it would be. And if Riley was willing afterwards, it would be Riley. What I am saying is I'm not comfortable being a BOT member, appointing somebody for a position, but we did just have two people run and we do have a number tallied of votes of how many votes they got, which gives us, the, the decision's clear for us. We just need-
No, I agree. I agree. The world hasn't changed that much in two weeks.
So what you're saying is, um, we know from the election results how many citizens support these two candidates, and if you have a, an unknown person applying for the trustee position, we have no idea how much support they have in the community.
Correct, and they need to do their due diligence as part of the democratic process and get their petition in at the required time per state statute. And we have no business as BOT members appointing or letting anybody in an appointment process. It's either we appoint somebody who was part of the last election or we hold off to a special election. The whole question here is, are we gonna have a quorum? You just said you're going on vacation mid-July. This is the point where Julian's gonna be gone, Tom's gonna be that. All that has to happen is I get injured on the job site and boom, town's done.
Yep. I'll try to make the meeting, but I'm not sure.
The time change is hard for you. I can't even, but anyway, it's whole. Yeah, I, I mean, at first, I think that makes sense. We reach out to David first, we reach out to Riley second and do what they say. Um, and then if we lose another trustee in May, then in the special election, we fill that spot with the mayor's spot.
Then you adapt and overcome then.
So, Tom Mahold, what are your thoughts?
Be careful with your saw. Don't get hurt.
Yeah, please, don't get hurt.
Um, I, I, I think this, uh, this, I agree with, uh, trustee Baumhofer. I think this process makes sense, um, is, number one, we have to sound them out and, and see if there's an interest. Um, I did the same thing, um, and I didn't, I didn't, I didn't hear a clear commitment. Um, but we're, we're dangerously close to the edge of, of, um, lack of quorum and it, it feels, uh, it doesn't feel safe to me, uh, coming into the, the summer. Um, then I think that, yeah, so, so I, I would support this approach. Um, and then we need to, um, start to think, you know, I, I think we kinda know, we, we certainly know ballpark when you're gonna be living town trustee or, uh, Mayor Taylor and, um, I think, I'm, I'm really delighted to hear that we've got more candidates stepping forward. I think we were close to no quorum in- I think we were close to no quorum in terms of having candidates who wanted to run. I look forward to a really robust election going forward.
So my, my, my feeling is this. The Miss America contest has runners-up. Elections do not. To see these two candidates who were not elected by the public as runners-up, I think is, I think is eliminating options. I don't have a problem with allowing them to reapply, but I believe we should also allow members of the public to apply. I think we will
They have their chance to apply.
I think we have, I think we have advocated to the public more effectively than we had before. And we're seeing the effects in members of the public who are contacting Miranda about the possibility of running for the openings in the board. I would be in favor of doing exactly what trustee Baumhofer has proposed, if we also allow a bit of time for the public to apply for those positions. If no public, if nobody applies, that's fine.
Can we take a vote on this?
It's not an action item, so you would need to make a motion. And one thing, I mean, you also don't have to make this decision tonight. I just want to, the way you are choosing to go about appointment, I guess, is different. But if say you were wanting to open it to other people, there's a 21-day application turnaround for appointments, and so it would be 30 days before you looked at if you were to open it up to others. And so, if, you know, you're welcome to obviously move this to an action, but just wanted to reiterate, you don't need to make a decision tonight if you're not ready.
I guess my, my thought is, when it comes to 30 days, the benefit of, of my proposal was that next meeting, we could appoint, and we'd be done. If we open it up to other applicants, one, we are then taking the power of choosing a BOT member away from the citizens. Two, 60 days versus 90 days, again, in a month, it's not, it's not really that helpful. I guess my feeling is, if, I hear the argument of other folks did not necessarily, there is no runner-up in elections, except for the fact that by the unusual circumstances of you being a trustee with a four-year term that chose to run for mayor, we actually had two positions that everyone in town knew was going to be open. And people were running, and there were votes cast. And the only reason they're not sitting here sworn in tonight is because of this weird hiccup of state statute that, to me, just makes absolutely no sense, but is obviously there.
And I agree. I think, I think, I think we should, if there's a way to address that issue with the statute, that would be very nice. But right now, we're stuck with this.
So right now, the vote is, we either appoint, I would say personally, I'm not going to go for opening it up to other folks, simply because it's going to be 30 days versus 90, okay, maybe two months. I think we can get through that two-month thing. If the real fear is quorum, then we appoint. If we are okay to be razor-thin, we go for it. Hey, I get hurt on the job site, we got virtual. We'll be okay.
Well, and, and mid-May, there is a real possibility that we may find we have no additional trustees leaving. And if that is the case, we've got a quorum. Yeah, no more quorum problems. Which is why I like the idea of waiting till mid-May to make a final decision. It doesn't mean we can't plan, but I was feeling comfortable with mid-May for making that decision. And you're right, if, I, I still feel, I still feel that the process for appointment should be honored. But I know that long ago, that is how we picked a couple of trustees. I know that was what happened. And the advantage is, you've got some numbers on it. But the, the fact that you have the numbers is good, but the fact that, in all honesty, they lost that election carries information as well. As, again, you've got some data, that's good. But let's say there were two seats open, does that mean just everybody who runs gets in? It's, maybe, but it would be nice to follow, I, I, I very much like the procedure where we select, where we select from applicants, as we did the last time. But I understand your concern, and even if we waited on the special election, there's nothing that says we couldn't get a more traditional appointment process going, where we ask for applicants, and we'd still fill that slot faster than if we waited for the special election. So I, I'm entirely open to that suggestion. I maintain that I would like to see additional applicants. But that's something we could discuss further, perhaps over an action item. If someone would like to bring forward an action item to appoint, to fill my seat, we could then discuss that and then vote. And that would be the process.
I'll, I'll bring that as an action item.
If you would like to work with trustee Baumhofer on that, perhaps, you could bring forward
Can't we just do it right now? I'm pretty sure you can take a discussion item and turn it into an action item.
We have no one who wants to be appointed right now.
Oh, right, 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 right. Okay. So first, we reach out. I'm in, I haven't changed my mind. Either we appoint, ideally, it would be David Seitz, who was the fourth place. Because honestly, up until about a month before the election, I just assumed, I didn't realize the statute, and I just assumed there were four spots going to be available out of just logic. And, and then if not, Riley, I think, or we wait until September, or whatever it is, one big election, and take our chances. Those are the two choices for me. I don't think we have any place to be appointing people. It doesn't seem right to me. We're only like four or five people, five people, is that what we are, if Eric were here, to make these decisions, to represent the entire town? Doesn't seem right to me.
Well, it's, it's, it's one of the two methods we can use, according to the statutes. But I certainly would prefer an election.
So do we move something to an action item tonight?
No, I guess not.
To say
We have no ability, because we have nobody to appoint. This is just a discussion.
That's just a discussion.
Oh.
What's clear is that the board is split on this. Well, one, we have nobody to appoint. It seems like if we had someone to appoint, somebody could call a motion, and then we'd vote, and the democratic process would move forward. Right now, we were discussing to try to all get on the same page.
Okay.
And there's still not a clear answer.
Yeah. I think, I, I think there's quite a few people in the public who would object to us appointing someone other than the two candidates who did not get elected. So to honor the public, I think, and, and we do know that they have support from the public, because they got quite a few votes. So.
All right. So I guess the next step is to reach out to those candidates. Who does that? Does Miranda do that, or?
We'd have to call an out-of-four to direct town staff to do that.
I see.
Discussion item. And currently, there is still debate amongst the board.
Okay. Well, do we want to try that and see if we get an out-of-four?
I could be swayed either way. I think the mayor's point is very valid when it comes to the appointment process. I don't think in the town of Netherland history, we have ever appointed someone based upon numbers from the election, simply because we needed somebody to fill a seat. There's valid arguments on both sides here. One, that if you're going to do the appointment process, you should follow the appointment process as it is laid out in our statutes and in our ordinance. That was, after all, the oath that you all just took tonight, the mayor himself. So to appoint someone is more of a need of this board functionality. It's, could be said to be following the ordinance, but it's going to be a different appointment process than we've ever used. Therefore, we're going to get into the issues of lack of consistency, which is a constant problem and complaint of the public. The only reason we might want to do this is because there is this unknown, and the fact is, is guess what? People have lives, and this is a volunteer position. So ultimately, I believe the mayor has made the best suggestion. Hold a special election. We don't have to decide we're holding it until May, and we'll know mid-May whether this needs to be complicated. What could be worthwhile to still do is to reach out to these applicants and say, would you be willing to be appointed, should the BOT need to sometime between now and July? Because as Julian said, it might come May, and we might go, okay, now we're going to have a mayor position and two trustee positions known for sure. And at that point, this board might feel more like a fire to say, we need to appoint someone, and then let the other one be elected.
Trustee Baumhofer, what would be your thoughts on perhaps making a decision at the next meeting?
I think that would give us more time to know and more time to follow on this. And by the next meeting, these two individuals we are thinking and talking about potentially appointing, we'll, we'll have an answer from them.
Yes. And even if we were to ask for applicants, that seat would still be filled quicker than from an election. I am hard-pressed to simply select just from those two. I would feel very uncomfortable with that. I would feel more comfortable with inviting them to reapply very quickly. It couldn't be a big deal. They've already applied once. And also ask other members of the public to apply in the usual fashion, and then choose from them. But I am certainly open to the possibility of some process of appointment to fill that seat, just to make, just, just to reduce the risks.
Is there anything stopping town staff from reaching out to those folks just to get an idea? Is there anything stopping us from starting an appointment process?
I guess what's the question that you, that you were directing town staff to ask?
I think we would be asking town staff to inquire with the two candidates who failed to achieve a BOT position, to determine if they are willing to accept an appointment. I remain pretty steadfast in wanting that to be a part of our standard procedure. If we find ourselves desperate in, at end of May, we may have an emergency resolution to say, we're going to go with these guys, because we got, you know, we got no other applicants yet. But I would like to see a request for applicants as well, from the general public. And if nobody in the general public is interested, that's what we got. We, we've got two people who might be willing to go. But I think it would be a matter of suggesting to town staff that they inquire with those candidates to determine if they would accept an appointment, and consider that part of their application process, but then also announce to the general public the application process. So I think we would want, next meeting, to bring an action item to appoint someone to fill the trustee position that is now open.
So my recommendation, though, is that typically with any sort of appointment to boards and commissions, we allow a 21-day application period. And so I think if the intention is, if that's what your intention is, then you should move this to an action item, and direct staff to release the requests for applications, and then allow enough time to do that.
Who would like to move to make this an action item?
I'll so move it, because I've done all the
You are, you are a mis mover today.
To an action item, so we can discuss
So we can direct.
Direct staff to put out a call for applications for trustee position.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a move, a motion, and a second. Macy, please call the vote.
Trustee Corvelin?
No.
Trustee Baumhofer?
Yes, yes.
Trustee Blakemore?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Maholt?
Yes.
And Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
Thank you.
This is now an action item?
Can I ask a clarifying question? So I think
Absolutely.
What I'm wondering, you know, if you're, I think it's misleading if you're just going to ask for applicants, and mayor may not choose to fill via vacancy. So I could think a question before you right now is, are you filling this trustee vacancy created by Mayor Taylor through appointment?
Let me see if I can word this in a way that the board finds acceptable. I believe this new action item, and we're obviously kind of writing roughshod on this one, is to direct town staff to begin the process of appointing a trustee for the now-vacated trustee position. We are further directing town staff to initially contact the two candidates who did not win seats to see if they would like to be part of that collection of applicants. I believe that what the board is considering is that we begin with exactly what I have suggested to you. And if we find that we are losing a trustee mid-May, the Board of Trustees may make a decision to short-circuit that action. And if those original two applicants have agreed, we may appoint one of them. But I don't think that's required. I think we may well find ourselves entirely satisfied going through a standard appointment process.
I guess I just have concerns, because you're asking people to apply, but then mayor may not have any intention of appointing them.
I think that would be an emergency move, motion, if we had to.
To appoint?
To appoint before the operation was
I guess I just question if it's appropriate to be asking for applications for appointment if it's not certain that that's your intention.
Let's go, let's go around the board and see if the trustees are satisfied to go through a standard appointment process, and to grit their teeth and avoid appointing if we find we're losing another trustee. Is that a fair question for the board?
Yeah. So you're asking if the board wants to appoint for your vacancy, and then if there happens to be another trustee vacancy, that will definitely go towards the special election.
Yes.
No.
No. I think what the mayor is suggesting is that we are appointing, and then if another trustee beyond the mayor comes up, is that we would hold back the appointment and hold all three, which it doesn't actually work as well as it might sound, because the state statute doesn't allow it.
Well, I had to wait till it came out of my mouth to really get it.
I was processing, as you were saying it, and I was going, this isn't going to work. We really have to decide, are we going to appoint or not?
Right, because you're going to need to adopt a resolution stating that that's how you're handling this vacancy.
We're going to appoint. So if, if, that may be the choice. So is, so let me, let me verify then with the board. Are we prepared to fill that trustee seat through an appointment using our existing process? That is to say, going out for appointments, and making sure that those two failed candidates are part of the appointment if they want to be, part of the appointment group if they want to be? Is that acceptable to this board? It does, admittedly, get that seat filled for the special election. So, trustee Blakemore, what are your opinions?
Oh, yeah. You know, even though we're going to get some pushback on this, we're also going to get pushback if we don't open the applications open, don't open them up to people other than those two candidates who ran. So, so I think we, we should do that, and I think we should make that decision tonight, so that we can get your, your seat filled. And it sounds like there's a few people, in addition to the two who ran, who are interested in a trustee seat. So we'll have their applications. I imagine we'll have people from the public speaking to support them. So I think that we can make a wise decision. And I think this would be the wise thing for us to do right now, to get a fuller board of trustees.
Thank you, trustee Blakemore. Trustee Maholt?
I'm torn. I, I, in my head, I can argue both of them. It makes sense. It's, it's almost a coin toss. I think, though, I, I think though, that, um, it's clear that the dust is gonna clear in about, uh, four to five weeks. And to me, um, I think if I had to make a decision right now, I'd say that's a risk I'd take. The, what's, I guess, uh, I'm kind of in, in the risk assessment business, and, um, I think it's a tolerable risk. The, the worst that could happen is we might go for a meeting or two where we're having a, a trouble getting quorum. But I, I think if we do too many things piecemeal, one at a time, um, it confuses people and it doesn't have, um, it, I think, as trustee Blakemore said, we're gonna have, people are gonna have a bad taste in their mouth no matter what. Um, I like to, I believe in making a decision when I have to make a decision and not before, and I don't think we're there right now. That's my personal thoughts.
Thank you very much. Uh, trustee Baumhofer? Having heard my hash of the suggestion, now let's see what you think.
I could be swayed either way on this. Uh, Tom swaying me a little bit toward the side of not make the decision tonight. My deal is, it really doesn't matter if we appoint, whether we open it or not. Um, I'd be fine to open it. Well, I think our opinions have been stated tonight, and how we're gonna vote during an appointment is how we would vote during an appointment individually. Um, I guess my worst fear here is that we're gonna appoint someone to fill this, we're gonna have a special election for mayor, it's gonna be Tom, maybe myself, running for mayor, we're gonna get elected, and then we're gonna have to appoint another BOT. That's the worst-case scenario. So, I'm with Tom, let's hold off till we absolutely have to make a decision.
Thank you very much. Trustee Corvallon?
Yeah, I'm agreeing with, uh, John and Tom here. I, let's just, let's just see what happens with that other trustee, um...
Trustee Corvallon, are you on mute?
Nope, I'm not. You guys don't hear me? Not on mute.
I can see, we can see you, but we cannot hear you.
Well, that's on your end. I don't know, um, no idea.
This is Cynthia, I can hear Tanya, and I'm...
All right, it's everybody, it's happening at the beginning of the meeting. The people virtual can hear me and the people in the office can't. Um, so, anyway.
We, we have background music.
I'll text Miranda.
Trustee Corvallon, can you hear us?
Yes, but you can't hear me. I'm gonna text Miranda.
Should we continue talking? Was that what you were saying?
I sent Miranda a text. Is there a chat picture on here?
Got it. We can hear you now.
What? Okay, well, I just sent Miranda a text and I said, I'm, let's wait and see if the trustee says they're gonna stay, then we can wait for the special election to do everything. Um, I'm not, I don't really, A, I don't think we really have the time to sit here and deal with this, um, of vetting out all these candidates and stuff. It's a huge job, it's subcommittees, it's this and that, work sessions, um, so let's just see, let's just hope that, um, our trustee stays with us and we can wait until September, um, or, you know, 90 days from when you resign is when we can put the special election on. So, um, I'm willing to take my chances.
I, I would suggest that, so, so this is an action item, so that means we need to vote, right?
Motion to table until May 3rd.
Yep. Until, until May when?
May 3rd. May 3rd, next BOT meeting.
Oh, oh, get it. Maybe we should, can we motion a table until we find out what's going on with the other trustee?
I think we've gotta have a date, don't we?
You could table it indefinitely and it could always be...
Motion to table till date uncertain.
Yeah, because I mean, this has already been a long discussion.
All right. We have a motion and a second on the table. Macy?
Trustee Blakemore?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Mahold?
Yes.
Trustee Baumhofer?
Yes.
Trustee Corvallon?
Yes.
And Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, that's the end of the items on the agenda. Does anyone on the board have an additional item they would like to discuss? Is there any other business? Any other business or a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
The, the motion lady is upset now. You want a second? Oh...
John already did.
I thought it was actually Tom.
We have a motion and a second. We don't know who seconded, but we will trust that it was someone. Uh, Macy, motion to adjourn.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
Trustee Blakemore?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Mahold?
Yes.
Trustee Baumhofer?
Yes.
And trustee Corvallon?
Yes.
Thank you.
And we are adjourned at only five minutes till the deadline. Thank you very much, members of the board. This was a very effective first meeting, and I look forward to a handful more, at least. Thank you very much.